Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the April twenty fourth meeting of the governing body to order. And Madam Clerk, if you would take the roll, please.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escabel.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Leiborn.
Here.
Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royball. Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
One member is absent, mayor. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is number four consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of C A are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so request and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in the, in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Are there any items a member of this governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item eighteen A.
All right, we'll remove item eighteen A. We do have a public hearing. We can't pass that until we have our public hearing. So that one did need to come off our consent agenda. Anybody else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Seagrave, seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The consent agenda is approved with Mr. Johnson voting no.
Next item is six A, public hearing for disposable, disposal of real property and land exchanged between the city of Cheyenne and Sun Valley Estates LLC, generally located south of Raleigh Drive.
All right. We have a, a exchange of land so that we can have some room for our greenway. And I didn't know if anybody here wanted to speak to this under the public hearing. If you do, please come up to one of the two podiums. Anybody in the audience? All right, how about from the governing body? All right, hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. Thank you.
Next item is six B, public hearing for a bar and grill application filed with the city clerk's office for F A F O Restaurant Group LLC, doing businesses Doghouse Restaurant thirty-eight thirty-eight at Con Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right. Couple of weeks ago, we got great news. The Doghouse was reopening. And so we're excited about that. And well, welcome back. There you are. Hi, guys. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Elena Schultz, and this is my husband, Charles Schultz, and we are the principal owners of the FFO Restaurant Group, excited to bring the Doghouse Restaurant back and here to answer any questions that you might have with our application for our license for our bar liquor license.
The only question I keep hearing is when are you going to be reopened?
We are shooting for the end of May first of June. So we are excited. We are so excited and, and also excited to hire local people here to help also give them jobs as well. About forty people is what we normally hire for that restaurant. So we're very excited to get this moving forward.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the governing body wish to ask a question? Mr. Cook?
I do, and maybe this is, uh, not sure necessarily how relevant this is to the discussion, mayor, through you, for the applicants. Number one, I'm very excited to see this. And I hate to put you on the spot. That's really not my intent with this, but I'm just curious again, you know, because this, you know, for a long time, when, when the original, you know, ownership was open, they looked like they were flourishing. So I'm just wondering, what your experience is owning these types of restaurants or, or if you have some experience to build on, whether that's yourselves or the other parts of the, the, the management team. But I just, I just would hate to see you folks go through this, this time and trouble and this expense for a similar thing to happen. So I just, I really want to see you be successful. And, and that's why I'm asking this, this question, just to see how's it going to be different, I guess. Go ahead.
That's a great question. Um, I'll let Chuck share a little bit of his experience first and just also his commitment to, um, to what we're doing right now. So I'll let you go and talk about your experience.
Let's see, I managed, uh, parties in Torrington back in the late eighties. I was the youngest chief manager in the state of Wyoming. Did that for a year. Yeah, so.
And then worked for the, retired from the railroad after twenty-five years. So as a chief operator, so managing people definitely is a gift. For myself, I was the chief academic officer for Douglas County in Colorado with sixty-eight thousand kids. And then just recently before this endeavor, was also the chief academic and equity officer at Pooters School District with about thirty-six thousand kids. So running and, uh, running school districts definitely involves, uh, a unique skill set, not just in academics, but also as a former principal, um, running cafeterias and signing off on really large purchases is extremely, extremely detailed oriented and also being a good steward of taxpayer funds in my previous life as well. So we're excited. I think it's something that, um, we can, whatever we don't know, we're not, uh, unafraid to ask questions and learn about it. Uh, we're excited to go to the corporate office tomorrow and start our two weeks of training in California. And it was supposed to snow here, but you know, we'll be thinking and sending warm, warm thoughts your way. But you know, we're excited. It's a great program that they have to make sure we're successful. I can't speak about the previous owners. I don't know who they were. But what I can tell you is it was a very successful franchise and it closing had nothing to do with the success of this particular franchise, but other business endeavors that that particular group had. This is our focus. We live here. Um, they were not here. We're local and we believe in giving back to our community.
You can work day to day in the store?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Dr. Aldridge.
Uh, Mayor Collins for you. I just wanted to say thank you to both of you. Um, I know that, uh, the two of you and your partner, uh, one of your partners came to council and coffee last week. And really spent some time visiting with us about your goals and aspirations for that business. And we're really excited to have you in Ward three. So welcome and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Escabel.
Yeah, Mr. Through you. Uh, also, when we visited at council and coffee, if you would share some of the conversation we had about what your plans are for the patio and incorporating, um, different items into the menu that
Yeah.
you had experience from when you lived in Louisiana.
Yeah, absolutely. He's really excited about the Louisiana piece. That's where I'm from originally. So, um, we are going to enclose with glass garage doors. The patio area, one thing I've learned very quickly is the wind rules all things here in Wyoming. So we want to be able to have access to the outdoor seating area for our guests every day. So we're, uh, working with some great contractors here locally, um, great engineers here. So we'll be putting in our commercial permit after we open. It's not a requirement to open because it is summertime, but definitely going into the fall, we'll have the garage doors there. Uh, we'll also be doing really fun events. So I believe in, uh, of course, diversity and honoring everyone's culture and being from Louisiana. When we have Mardi Gras, that's very important to me. So we will have special, uh, items that we have permission from the franchise to do such as hurricanes and jambalaya and all those good things like that. So they're giving, they honor that too. Like they respect and value diversity of culture and of people. So they're looking forward to that. So I'm sure they'll be coming down to, uh, our store during that time as well as during frontier days. So I love jumping into the community. And I know Chuck has been a part of Wyoming all of his life. So I love learning and jumping into the community and see like, what is it that's important here? Because if it's important here, it's important to me and it's important to us. And that's from, you know, the state level, from Cheyenne as a city, and also from our school level as well. We're really excited to support our local school district by hiring, uh, staff from teachers as well as kids that can come help as well. And when they're having games and when they're having prom and graduation, I think that's the only part that really, that really just gets me right now is that we're not, we may not be open exactly to cater for graduations, but we're looking forward to doing that. We're looking forward to having those special hours for Cheyenne Frontier Days when people come through for sturges. We're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, guys, and good luck.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak to the new restaurant? All right. Anybody else in the council? All right, the purpose of the public hearing has been met and we'll assign this item to the finance committee.
Next item is six E, public hearing for the city of Cheyenne's annual action plan program year twenty twenty-three, prepared by the Cheyenne Housing and Community Development Office.
Well, welcome, ma'am.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Deanne Woodoff with the Cheyenne Housing Community Development Office. The primary purpose of the Housing Community Development Office is to oversee in an accountable manner, funding allocation for the Community Development Block Grant. Community Development Block Grant is an entitlement program that is administered through the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds are allocated to projects that meet a national objective and are ineligible activity. The funds have been utilized for programs that address decent housing, homeless prevention, senior and youth needs and special population needs. The city of Cheyenne has been receiving the entitlement grant since nineteen seventy-five. The city of Cheyenne is required to develop an annual action plan for program year twenty twenty-three. For program year twenty twenty-three, the city of Cheyenne's entitlement allocation is four hundred forty-eight thousand eleven dollars. In addition to Cheyenne's entitlement allocation, the Housing Community Development Office will be using approximately a hundred and seven thousand ninety-one dollars in recaptured funding. This twenty-three annual action plan isn't, is consistent with the five-year comprehensive consolidated plan that was completed in twenty twenty. This action plan provides recommendations for six projects, demonstrates that a citizen participation plan was adhered to, and lists what will be accomplished through the recommended projects and community activities such as food, emergency services, and assisting with rehabilitation projects. The H N C D office administers a community development block grant funding with the assistance of a nine-member advisory council. During the grant cycle, the advisory council oversees the grant process and makes recommendations to the city council for funding. I would like to publicly commend the advisory council for the commitment they have to their community and their willingness to share their time and expertise for the betterment of our community. Wendy Soto, Board Chair. Steve Gannison, Vice Chair. Ray Moya, Secretary. Joseph Bainbridge, Robin Bookenegra. Joseph Philbrant, Elizabeth Hagler, Erin LeBlanc, J C Manola, along with Michelle Aldridge, City Council Representative. Some are on Zoom as well. We also have several nonprofits here. Could all who have benefited from C D B G please stand? Thank you. Announcements of funding availability were done through a news release and emails and an application training session was conducted. Eight grant proposals were received that totaled over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. All grant proposals were initially reviewed by the H N C D office for eligibility and then presented to the advisory council members for review and recommendation. The availability of public service funds was calculated to be sixty-five thousand, a fifteen percent cap of the entitlement allocation, and the grant proposals received total a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The availability of general service funds was calculated at three hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars, and the grant proposals received were four hundred thousand five hundred dollars. Program administration was calculated to be eighty-nine thousand six hundred and two, which is twenty percent of the allocation. A public hearing was held in November for the community to view all grant applications that were received, and one public meeting was conducted in February. Public service projects. COMEA Journey Program to Self-Sufficiency, thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to provide for electrical and medical assistance. Needs Crisis Food Assistance, sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to provide for food baskets. Safe House Victim Emergency Fund, ten thousand dollars to provide emergency assistance. General Service Projects COMEA Women's Dorm, eighty-five thousand dollars in tier one, hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tier two to provide for the expansion of the women's dorm. Habitat for Humanity, hundred and sixty thousand tier one, hundred and ninety thousand tier two for street sidewalk curb and gutter installation. Habitat for Humanity Home Rehabilitation, sixty thousand five hundred dollars to provide for homeowner housing rehabilitation. Program Administration, eighty-nine thousand six hundred and two dollars. The annual action plan for program year twenty twenty-three was written and a thirty-day comment period was held requesting input from Cheyenne residents. The H N C D office received no written comments to the plan. Are there any questions?
Oh, Deanne, I just know how hard you guys work on this, and we just want to say thank you. It's much, much appreciated. Does anyone on the governing body have a question for our staff? Dr. Aldridge, did you?
I have a comment. Uh, Mayor Collins for you. I just wanted to, um, give a shout out to, I know Renee and Deanne have worked really, really hard to really try and turn this around. And, um, in a very short period of time, um, with the, under the leadership of Chairman Wendy Soto and with the, uh, council members who have shown an, an unbelievable amount of dedication to try and make sure that, all of the funds that are available are being spent in our community appropriately and in accordance with the federal law. And I think that, um, it's a testament to your hard work to see this four hundred and forty-eight thousand and eleven dollars being able to be utilized in our community by some of our most vulnerable populations and our citizens. So really appreciate all that this council does as well as, um, the chairperson leadership and Renee and Deanne really trying to turn this around. So really appreciate you guys.
Anybody else in the governing body? All right, Deanne, thank you so much. How about anybody else in the audience want to speak during this public hearing? All right. Well, thank you for that. About anybody in the governing body last time? All right, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. We'll move on to the next item.
Number seven ordinance on second reading annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located west of Bridge Road between Jackson Street and Douglas Street.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak to this annexation before us today? Mr. White, welcome.
Uh, through you, Mr. Collins. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I took the last, governing body meeting on, um, May tenth, the applicant withdrew the idea of a charter school. This last week, they withdrew in public service committee on the fact of, um, not having to, uh, the other part of the app, application, which I'm trying to remember. But, uh, my question is, if they were, if they have withdrawn the applicant's desire to do annexation, if I have my story right, then they were the ones that voluntarily asked the governing body to become, to get into the city. So doesn't that mean that this thing would just be null and void now? I mean, that's a question. I did ask the, I called the city's, the city attorney's office on Wednesday and maybe we were playing phone tags, so they never got back with me. So it was just a question on how this continues when the two parts of the application was, were withdrawn.
Mr. White, I believe, uh, state law says once you fix your signature to an application for, uh, annexation, you cannot withdraw that. And so we can ask our staff, but I believe in fact that that is the state law. And so once you, once you propose, uh, and bring us a petition for annexation, at that point, uh, you cannot remove your signature. And, uh, then it's up to the governing body to make a decision after that point.
One other question, though, Mr. Cook brought up the fact, and maybe I misunderstood what he said at the committee meeting was, does this go back to the responsibility of the city? I guess what, with what his comments were last time.
What do you mean by responsibility of the city?
Well, it acted, I quite understood that the applicant withdrew everything. So part of that responsibility went back to the governing body. But maybe I misunderstood the committee meeting because the city attorney wasn't there. So I was, that was the question on, I guess you continued to do the annexation regardless if the applicant has withdrawn everything, correct?
I believe, sir, that is correct. We have a, we have a valid application and, uh, and so we're, we're going to move that application through the process. Plus, I would just say, I think it's a, it's a county pocket a hundred percent surrounded. And so we're gonna, it was on our list to annex in the near future anyways. And so, uh, uh, this just moves it up a little bit on our list. Thank you. Ms. Fagan, did I miss anything? Thank you, ma'am.
No.
Anybody else? In the audience? All right. Hearing none, Mr. Cook, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body?
Um, if I may.
Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, um, what Mr. White is referring to is, uh, I did ask because of, I did ask staff and, 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 uh, those folks, uh, what happened to the application? Um, now that, uh, the applicant that had technically, um, bowed out, so to speak. Um, really, the question I was asking was, you know, is there a staff report? Is there a developer? And, and really it falls upon the city is my understanding. So that's what the question was. Is that, uh, it's a, basically the city is the applicant at this point. And that was the question that I was asking.
Ms. Fagan, if you could answer that question, we'd appreciate you.
Erin Fagan for the Planning and Development Office. Yes, the city is applicant now at this point in time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to get that on record, mayor, as, as to what I was, what I was trying to ascertain.
Understood, Mr. Cook. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, the motion before us is on second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zone classification of M R medium density residential or land being annexed to the city of Cheyenne located at fifty-two twenty-four Ridge Road, west of Ridge Road between Jackson Street and Douglas Street.
Right, so this is a, a change for the land that we just annexed on second reading. We have to give it a city zone, and so that's what we're doing here. Anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the zone? Dr. Aldridge.
Um, Mayor Collins for you. I just have a question. If this is zoned M R medium density residential, if in the future another church wanted to buy this property and utilize it or another private school, would, uh, this zoning preclude that?
Ms. Fagan.
Erin Fagan for the Planning and Development Office. Um, if, if another church moved in, they could continue that same use. And if a charter school wanted to exist there, it would just go, have to go through the site plan process to get that accomplished.
Any questions? All right. Any other questions from members of the governing body? Hearing none, the zone changes on second reading. All those in favor, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The zone change is approved on second reading.
Number nine ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from M R medium density residential to N R two neighborhood residential, medium density for land located on lots one and two, block one, twin twenty-two subdivision.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to this, uh, zone change amendment? Welcome, Mr. Swain. How are you?
I'm, I'm well, mayor. Uh, mayor, members of the council, Brandon Swain, twenty-eight oh two Dimming Boulevard. Uh, the purpose of this application is to allow, uh, two single-family detached dwellings on the property. Current zoning is M R, which allows use by right for twin homes. So the proposed zone change doesn't increase any density. It just allows me to build two detached structures as opposed to two homes that share, uh, a party wall. You guys have seen me, uh, quite a few times. I'm a huge fan of these infill projects. This is probably the most attainable project I have before me as it's only two dwellings as opposed to ten or twenty, like the other projects. So I've been really looking forward to breaking ground on these and getting them going. I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the developer? Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins for you. I'm just curious, um, Brendan, how far apart will these two houses be on the lot? I mean, from wall to wall, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Ten feet. Uh, it's, it's probably even a building code requirement, but, um, certainly planning and development is going to require a five-foot setback from the property line.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Brendan, good luck on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to the zone change? All right, hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor of the zone change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The zone change is approved on second reading.
Next item is number ten ordinance on second reading, amending chapter two point zero four, mayor and city council within title two, administration and personnel in chapter twelve point zero four, streets, sidewalks and driveways generally, within title twelve, streets, sidewalks and public places of the municipal code of the city of Shan, Wyoming, to amend provision, governing contract approvals.
All right, we have a change in state law that raised some of the thresholds, and, uh, we've been asked by staff to match those. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak to that ordinance? All right, hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Escabel. Any questions or comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
This is a pretty big change. I wonder if Mr. Bartle Board can come down and speak to it a little bit. He educated me about it. Um, and it really is, uh, pretty significant. And I don't think this, uh, entitlement really tells the whole story. So if we could have some of the figures and some of the reasoning behind your, uh, requests for this, um, I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Bartle, I know you didn't want to speak to us tonight, but welcome.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. T J Bartle, Board Purchasing Manager. Happy to be here and address whatever concerns we have. Uh, Mayor, through you, the Councilman Leiborn. We did visit last week and generally the, the, I'll give a broad overview of the proposed ordinance and then kind of give a little bit of the finer details about what we're after. So, uh, current city code is at thirty-five thousand dollars generally for what is approved by the governing body. There are some exceptions for professional services or contract modifications. So those things are all a, a little bit varying. So this ordinance proposes to bring the approval threshold to seventy-five thousand dollars across the board for revenue contracts, uh, expense contracts, professional services contracts and revenue generating contracts. The Senate File one sixty-four that was recently passed by the legislature, this speaks to the advertised bidding threshold for when we as the city have to go out for a formal invitation for bid process. So bringing that, uh, then the previous threshold for the invitation to bid process was thirty-five thousand. So that jump is from thirty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. And the thought process behind the ordinance is to bring that approval threshold from thirty-five to seventy-five to, to follow with the bid threshold. So in this, in the instance that the ordinance were not to be passed, we still have the authority to let projects less than seventy-five thousand. And that would be via a quote process, a more informal process, but without the code change, we would be presenting to the governing body a consideration of quotes instead of a consideration of bids. So you would, without this ordinance update, we would have, uh, a small concrete job for fifty thousand dollars. That would come before the governing body without this change. The second part of this that's not really spoken for in ordinance is the changes to the purchasing policy that will also be forthcoming. The purchasing policy is referenced in city code, but it's updated outside of a formal ordinance process. From currently, the quote threshold is from five thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars. Upon passage of this ordinance, the quote threshold would raised from the bottom tier of ten thousand to go to seventy-five thousand where three quotes are required. Um, and with that process, a little bit more formal documentation will be required with, uh, the, be, if you weren't able to get three quotes more formally, who you reached out to for quotes, who denied you the opportunity to provide a quote. All of those things will be a lot more formally handled. It'll still be an informal process, not an advertised bid, but those things will be. It'll still be an informal process, not an advertised bid, but those things will be handled at an administrative level. So let's generally intend of the ordinances to match governing body approval thresholds with the new advertised bidding threshold. And I, we're proposing to bring everything to seventy-five thousand, just so it's, uh, an easy yes or no across the board. If it's above thirty-five, excuse me, above seventy-five thousand, it goes to the governing body to review. Um, hopefully, that's some good background for you. Happy to answer any other questions you have. Thank you.
Did that help you, Mr. Leiborn, or, or answer your question?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Bartleport is, uh, really good at his job, and he would remind everyone that there used to be three people in the purchasing office, and TJ's handling it, uh, single-handedly, and always is glad to answer questions. So, um, I think this is probably going to be where I'm going to have to, uh, learn a little bit more as things go along. But, uh, that is a big change in that dollar amount. I think I'm confident that, uh, TJ can handle it, and I think we need to, uh, be aware of some of these things so that projects where they were interested in, and things that we're buying, uh, we can understand how they came to be. Thank you.
Ms. Seagrave, did you have a?
Mr. Mayor, do we know roughly how long it's been since this has been updated?
Ms. Bartleport, do you have that number?
Uh, Mayor, through you to Councilman Seagrave, I don't have the exact date in front of me. I've, I've been with the city since twenty eighteen, and it was thirty-five thousand dollars then, and I think it has been for the pretty foreseeable future before that. Um, I'm may, hoping maybe Stephanie can assist me with a date if she's quick on the mouse. Please and thank you.
A while.
That's a scientific term, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I just think, uh, this is probably needed with inflation and all the things that have occurred over the past, I, I believe it was thirty-five thousand.
When we were on?
Back in two thousand, when I was first elected. So, I mean, I believe it's been a long time, so. Uh, I'm hoping that this will help the city, um, move along some of the, some of the purchases and projects that we have that seem to be, uh, forever and ever delayed. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I just had a question, TJ. So Senate File one sixty-four, we have this handy dandy reference sheet. Um, Senate File one sixty-four, does it address all five of these areas or only the advertised solicitation bidding requirement for bids and RFPs?
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich, Senate File one sixty-four specifically speaks to the advertised bidding threshold for non-professional services and the purchases of vehicles and equipment. So to confirm, city code and state statute follow the same in that all vehicles and automobiles must be advertised for bid regardless of purchase. So city code already said that, and that remains unchanged. Um, all of the proposed ordinance changes, uh, are just in line to bring all of our approval thresholds in line with this, so that we're generally clear and consistent across the board with our thresholds. But you are correct, Senate File one sixty-four really is only speaking to public improvement projects and bids for automobiles and equip, equipment.
So a follow-up question, Mayor Collins. Um, so I'm just curious then, because I definitely understand the need for this, um, increase, especially when we're looking at equipment and vehicles and things like that. Um, and I know that that's been a challenge to, you know, by the time we get things through our process, that a lot of times are no longer available or they're gone. Um, but I'm wondering what the justification is under the non-professional services and professional services, because um, it seems to me that going from, um, thirty-five thousand non-professional services to seventy-five thousand is quite a significant jump, um, in approval threshold.
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich, so the, the non-professional services, so that's everything we're thinking of for minor construction projects, purchases of equipment, supplies, commodities, things of that nature. So those are all the things that Senate File one sixty-four speaks to as now having the mandatory bidding requirement at seventy-five thousand. So the thought there is, if we don't raise the approval threshold by the governing body, um, a department, like if Jason from CRE, if they had a sixty thousand dollar concrete job, they requested three quotes for that. Without the ordinance change, they still will have to bring that before the governing body. So although it is a large jump from previously at thirty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand, the intent is to follow the statutes, the statutory bidding thresholds. Otherwise, this governing body will be approving non-formally advertised quotes, estimates, and, uh, things generated outside of a formal bid process. So just for the sake of being clean and when, in what things the governing body does review, that's my recommendation.
Ms. Escabel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you just to comment that, um, come in the legislature and wham for raising these thresholds on these contracts, because so often government moves at a snail's pace, and this is really allowing us to start to streamline those processes. So, um, fully in support of it. Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve these changes to our contract approvals. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The, uh, ordinance amendment is approved on second reading with Dr. Rainey voting no.
Next item is number eleven, ordinance on second reading, amending an ordinance number forty-four twenty-nine, updating the city of Cheyenne solid waste fee schedule.
All right, so annually we require our departments to, uh, review their, uh, their fees and bring recommendations. They can be anywhere from no raise to whatever. Um, and so the Board of, um, or the Sanitation Department has, uh, a new fee schedule, and we're here to talk about that today. Anybody in the audience want to speak to that fee schedule? All right, hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Escabel. Any comments or questions from members of the governing body? Ms. Leiborn. Ms. Leiborn.
Um, I wonder if the Director of Public Works could, uh, give us a review of the necessity of this for the people that are watching home or are interested in how and why we do it this way and why this particular increase is coming.
Ms. Nemec.
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, thank you, Mr. Leiborn. Um, we annually do a fee increase, um, and that is based on the, uh, the cost, full cost accounting process that we follow each ten years. Each ten years, we're required to do a full cost accounting um, by the State, um, Department of Environmental Quality. So in twenty nineteen, we did that full cost accounting. They recommended some increases to, uh, what it does is basically adjusts our fees to make sure that, one, we have enough money for uh, capital expenses in the future, such as, uh, new landfill sales. Um, we still, we've built a couple. We still have seven yet to build. So the first one came at a price tag, first two came at a price tag of about six million dollars. So, um, we need to have that money in the bank when we're ready to put in the next two sales, which will be approximately seven years. Um, we also have to buy new equipment, um, following our equipment schedule, and all the other operational, uh, fees that were required. So the full cost accounting gives us a, a guideline to follow that will allow us to charge each of the, our customers, commercial, residential, um, for yard waste, for, um, trash, for all of those different items that we collect. It allows us to charge the customer what it actually costs to provide the service. So we're making some adjustments this year. You'll see that it's not all one, um, percentage, but it's a varied percentage. For example, our residential services are going up by one percent because we found that the residential, residents were actually, uh, paying more than what it costs to provide the service, and um, commercial is going up by three percent because commercial was, uh, not actually paying their fair share. So, and what it costs to provide the service. So residential, trash and recycle, uh, for example, is going up one percent. That includes, uh, that's a combination of trash and recycle, so it's one percent. The commercial recycling, however, is more expensive and will go up five percent. But residence is still at one percent. Yard waste all also one percent increase. Um, the landfill per ton is three percent, transfer station drop-off will be two percent, and our roll-off containers, uh, will be at three percent. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the governing body? Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I just, uh, want to express my appreciation. I know in decades past, we didn't always do this annually, uh, not just for sanitation, but BOPU and other, other departments as well, and particularly in, in these times of, uh, extraordinary inflation, it'd be so easy for us to get substantially behind, whereas we would need potentially a double-digit type rate hikes. So I would much rather see this on an annual basis than on a multi-year basis, and so I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
Any other members? Dr. Rainey.
I have a couple, uh, question and, and point, I guess. Um, first of all, my question is, I think if I recall, when we went through the budget last year, we expanded the yard waste program. But the comment would also made that we lost money on the yard waste program. So does the one percent increase cover what our costs are there?
Vicky Nemec, through you, Mayor. We lose money on all of our recycling. Uh, e-waste, household hazardous waste, um, recycling. We pay approximately, our cost is approximately fifteen thousand dollars a month to recycle. So, uh, compost facility, um, we lose about a half a million dollars a year. But what we gain is airspace in the landfill. So that, there is nothing more valuable in solid wa, in the solid waste business than airspace in the landfill.
Which is costly in itself.
Correct.
And then I just wanted to point out, um, to any of those listening, that several years ago, when there was an increases in sanitation, it went into the city's general fund, and, um, a few years back, we separated out into their own enterprise fund, and they're essentially run as a business where they have to, um, pay their own way, and, and so hence, I just want people to understand that these fee increases will go just to sanitation and not no longer go into the city's general fund.
Oh, that's a true story. We're doing the budget right now. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion to second to, uh, um, amend our, uh, sanitation solid waste fees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? This amended schedule is approved on second reading.
Next item is number thirteen, resolution for naming the median, which contains the historic airport fountain located to the east of the intersection of Central Avenue and East Avenue, to be known as Airport Fountain Park.
All right, at this time, is there anybody in the audience want to speak to the effort to, uh, name the area Airport Fountain Park?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Mike White. Uh, last week's Public Service Committee meeting, there was some discussion on what the city was getting themselves into. So I decided to go up there and take a look at the site just for my own comments, and I found a pretty good list of what the city would be doing. Um, Parks and Rec seemed to have a lot of responsibility with mowing grass, trimming trees, et cetera, because it's not sure what Mr. Sanchez's department would be getting into. Um, maintenance would be plumbing, irrigation, water source, whether it's under Eighth Avenue or across to the old airport board building, uh, maintenance on backflow preventers, water meters, et cetera. Uh, in addition, maintenance on the fountain. I really applaud the people that raised the money, but I'd just like to point out for the record that, uh, there's a lot of stuff that's going to have to be maintained. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to this effort to name a park? Mr. Lloyd.
Hi, my name is Seth Lloyd. I am a resident of Cheyenne. I'm at two zero nine East Fifth Avenue. Um, although I am a member of the Planning and Development Department, I have not participated in the department's efforts for the fountain. I'm just a normal citizen in this case. Um, I just want to state for the record, it's my understanding that this item deals solely with the naming of the property, not with the maintenance schedule on the property. So, um, when it comes to the naming, I'm kind of just a, really, I'm just kind of a meh on it. I don't have, I'm not really for it, I'm not really against it, it's kind of that. But, um, I would also want to state for the record that I have taken my family there. Um, I have three kids under the age of six, and we have gone there multiple times to enjoy the fountain and that space. So I just want to say that it is being used for a, as a kind of a recreation or destination-type purpose. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anybody else in the audience like to speak to this naming effort? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Millward Simpson, thirty-one oh two Spruce Court. I am, uh, pleased to be the chairman of your Cheyenne Historic Preservation Board. And, uh, this is the culmination of a very long, uh, effort on the part of your board over a number of years to raise money to help conserve and preserve, and tell the story of this very, very significant and important part of Cheyenne's history. And, uh, we, uh, conducted a petition drive, uh, to put the name before you that you're considering this evening. Uh, we plan to do some interpretation at the site, uh, have some interpretive signage to talk about the rich history of that site and the people that, uh, figure prominently in that site. So, uh, we would appreciate your favorable consideration of this naming resolution. I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Lib.
Um, Millward, how much did you raise and how did you raise it?
Um, Mr. Leiborn, through, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Leiborn. Um, there were tens of thousands of dollars raised. I would defer to the, uh, city planning staff with the exact number. Um, it took place over a number of years. Uh, there was, uh, private fundraising through an ornament sales program that one of our members did. Um, there were several grants to, uh, different organizations, including the Wyoming Cultural Trust Fund, the Women's Civic League, and a number of others. So there were grants that were applied for, uh, the CLG grant, which is the Certified Local Government Grant through the State Historic Preservation Office, a number of grants from them to do the various kind of pieces of this restoration project that include restoration of the physical object, the, uh, airport fountain itself. And, um, so it was, I don't know if they have the number or not. I'll defer to them.
Lonnie Olson, Planning and Development Staff, Mayor through you to Councilman Leiborn. It was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents.
To the penny, Mr. Leiborn.
Mr. Mayor. Um, Millward, I, I'd sure like to, uh, sure to tell Gary Sims, we appreciate how much he put into this. It was, he was, uh, relentless, and, uh, we've talked about it for a long time. So I'm really glad to see it come to, come to fruition, and I would point out that, uh, it is accessible because it's located there next to the crosswalk at a signalized intersection. It's unusual, but, uh, important, I believe. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just an editorial note, um, we, uh, considered a number of different names to put before you. Um, Stewardess Park was one that we were thinking about. Another one was to find a significant individual who figured in that history, preferably a woman. And, um, ultimately, it was decided that, uh, the, the names that were figured with the history um, for a number of different reasons, um, didn't seem to be, um, worthy of having, according to the board. Um, the name named after them, for one reason, they didn't live here. Uh, they were from out of town. They didn't figure in Cheyenne's history. So our philosophy was, if we name this Airport Fountain Park, we can still tell the story of all of those individuals through interpretation at the park site, through signage and other means to interpret them. So we do plan to tell the whole rich history, including the individuals involved in the history.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. I, I love the fact that we're able to restore that beautiful piece of, uh, of our history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Dr. Aldrich.
I'm Mayor Collins, through you. Um, first and foremost, thank you for your hard work and for leading the Historic Preservation Board. Um, I, to was, uh, I, I was hoping for something a lot more exciting as a name, because, um, Airport Fountain Park seems kind of like a no duh type of thing. Um, but I appreciate your explanation of, um, how that will be um, general enough to be enhanced upon through the additional work that you guys plan to do. Uh, but, and, and I think it also, I think people refer to it as Airport Fountain, so it's well-known in the community. Um, had the opportunity to attend, uh, I don't know what, what you really call it. It wasn't really a ribbon-cutting. It was when they turned the fountain on, uh, ceremony. Um, and I know that it ran for a while, um, and it was running maybe like on Tuesday and Thursday evenings or something during the summer months. Um, what are the plans to, will it actually be functional this summer, and what are the plans, or, the, um, the schedule for that? Do you know?
Uh, Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich, um, there were a, a number of mechanical challenges. challenges with the pump mechanism to be able to get the fountain working order, but the plan is to be able to have it consistently running. And again, I would defer to the planning department. They've been most, most involved in that technical aspect.
Lonnie, do you have an update for us?
Lonnie Olson, Planning and Development Department. Mayor through you to Dr. Aldridge. Oh, we do plan to have a celebration of it, the finally, the fountain finally being done. Currently, we're waiting for the freeze thaw cycle to be complete. That way we don't get it running and have to winterize it. And so we're hoping to get it this summer. We're gonna get an electrician to go look at the pump. Is that, the pump was replaced. So we just have to figure out if the amperage of the pump was too much or but we believe it shouldn't be too hard to get it running.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience want to speak about this? All right, hearing none. Dr. Rennie?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to adopt and I would so move.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Escabel. All right. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave, we'll start on this end.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to speak in opposition to this and it's not that I don't like the fountain. I too was at the I'm not sure what the term is.
The turning on.
The turning on of the fountain when they, when they completed it. Testimony we heard in committee, this fountain has been owned by the city since its inception. I originally thought it was owned by the airport, but apparently not. My concerns are several. First of all, I don't consider this park. It's sitting, sitting between four lanes of traffic. It's very difficult to get to. I'm glad we had testimony that we, that at least someone takes their small children there. But I don't consider it a park. My other concern is we're, we are giving this, I'm using that term loosely, to the Community Wreck and Events Department to maintain. And they absolutely have no additional funds. They are stretched to the max. And the testimony we heard, they don't have a clue what it's going to cost to run this on an annual basis. And so if we pass this, we're going to say, here, it's yours. Keep it running, make it look nice, but there's no money to go with it. And I just don't think that's fair to the CRE. They do so much. They already cut the grass there. So I just don't think that, first of all, it should be called a park. Second of all, we're giving it to a department that has no, no resources to make it work. That's why I'm in opposition. Thank you.
I heard somebody down here, Mr. Escabel?
This is Mr. Mayor in support of it, but this fountain has rich history to the city. And moving forward, governing body will always have the opportunity to look at renaming it. As I understand the history of it and the airport had a flight attendant school here. And there are a lot of women that, you know, participated in that program and when other governing bodies look at the history of that and moving forward, I think the opportunity that's going to afford us to possibly name that after one of these women that were you know, they were the people that you fly to Cheyenne. So I think just that the history of it and it's a part of us. So I'm glad that the Historic Preservation Board did all this work and really commend them for all their efforts. Thank you.
Dr. Rennie, did you have a comment, sir?
I did, Mr. Mayor. I guess, and maybe a question for staff. But currently, I think our planning office has been doing a lot of the maintenance there and CRI has been helping out. You know, this is really just a case of semantics. I think if we accept, if we all, you know, now designate it as a park, I think the care of it, I don't think that's going to change dramatically or effectively. So and if we vote it down and don't designate it as a park, it'll probably continue to be managed between planning and CRE. So I don't, I supported this in committee because whether we call it a park or whether we do not, probably it's going to get the same amount of attention from the people it's gotten attention from in the past.
Other comments? Mr. Cook?
Mayor, I, I very much appreciate what Mr. Simpson and his folks and the supporters have done. I mean, you know, you, you folks went out and got 300 some signatures. And I've, I've known Mr. Sims my, my entire life. Literally, my dad grew up with him. As, as I think you're aware, you know, my family as well. That being said, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote with Mr. Seagrave on this and, and really my, my thought process is you know, we've seen just in a handful of years, the difficulties that we've had with the the underground infrastructure with the spray park downtown. And the yearly struggles that we've had with maintaining that, getting it up and going every year. And some of the unforeseen, and, and we did a lot of homework on that project, as, as a lot of you know. You know, we thought we had our ducks in a row, right? I mean, you always think that you do and then there are always, in this climate, apparently, there are always things with that underground infrastructure. And frankly, that is, is much newer infrastructure than what is under the fountain. So I've just got some real concerns that frankly, I'm, I'm I'm skittish about doing this. I, I don't think it's a good idea to just cross our fingers and hope. So I, with that, as much as I appreciate the work that has been done on this, I'm, I'm going to, to vote in opposition along with my colleague from Word Two. Again, it's not because I don't like the project. I do like the project. I do like the, the fact that we want, we want to name it, but there's just a lot of unforeseen difficulty here that could cost us, could cost the city a lot of money.
Dr. Aldridge?
Mayor Collins through you. I guess I'm wondering, because this ordinance or resolution deals with Airport Fountain Park as a naming convention for that. I'm not, I understand the concerns about freezing. I understand the concerns about adding more to Community Wreck and Events plate and the cost. But I'm not really seeing how this resolution is going to change the financial commitment or the and maybe, I mean, if the, if the concern is with the word park, maybe we just call it Airport Fountain. But I'm not, I guess I'm not seeing the connection between this resolution, which is for naming that median strip, Airport Fountain Park, and all of the concerns that have been raised about the maintenance and the cost, maintain it. So maybe I'm dismissing something here.
Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding that if it, if we designate it as a park, it becomes part of CRE's responsibility. It will, whatever the costs are, will come out of their budget to maintain it in the future.
Mr. Johnson, did you have a?
Yeah, just basically for clarification, since I'm on the Historic Preservation Board, as Millard alluded to in his statement, I was the one that was very adamant about this being named after a woman. It was even more frustrating finding after the two petitions or three petitions, I can't remember how many we've actually done over the last two years, to actually find a book that was in our City Council Assistance Office that actually dealt with the Women of Aviation in Wyoming, where we had many, many choices of people besides Ellen Church, which is the one that they originally did not want to name it after because of her ties to Chicago and Los Angeles and went to Cheyenne, where we had other options to do it. And so there was some concerns about even reaching the 300 signatures with the city clerk's office for verification. Because I know that the last drive for the Airport Fountain Park was, you know, kind of long in the tooth. In regards to what has been concerned, when we discussed it, the Historic Preservation Board, excuse me, Historic Preservation Board in regards to recertification as a park, that was the original intent until it pretty much came down and through Historic Preservation Board that we found out that it was also a public right of way. That was our responsibility anyways. And so as Charles alluded to in committee, that the planning office had already taken care of a lot of things in regards to the electrical, as Lonnie alluded to, as well as, you know, because a lot of the electricity was cut during the 8th Avenue work on the curbs. And so that's why it couldn't go the entire year was because we were waiting for them to reconnect the electricity. They pretty much cut it after we did our, our ceremony last, last fall. And so we were kind of waiting on that. The Historic Preservation Board had also had wished, because if it had a park designation, which we, you know, learned or learned that it was responsibility of the city for the right of way issue. And that they didn't want, because they raised $132,000 this time, that if the fountain was to actually hit a point of disarray, whether that was destruction of tiles, the pump, any of the terracotta work that was done, that it would become the city's responsibility. So it didn't become at the behest of the board again to raise $132,000. So they were hoping for a little more city relief in that aspect if we took ownership of it. So, you know, looking at hindsight, it's always 2020 of whether or not the city should have been responsible for them, but they took it upon themselves to do the volunteer effort. As far as going through the channels of Historic Preservation Board over the last two years, like I said, and I said during the Kiwanis Park debate, I will not vote for a renaming of any park until we actually have one named for a woman. This was the first one I actually pitched to over two years ago to name the Airport Fountain Park for a flight attendant of renown in the city of Cheyenne. So I am also a known.
Anybody else? Dr. Aldridge?
Mayor Collins, I would like to move to amend this to remove the word park from the resolution.
Is there a second? Sorry, the motion dies for lack of a second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from members of the governing body? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of naming the median Airport Fountain Park, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? I see the hands of the nose. Mr. Seagrave, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Cooker knows the naming is approved.
Next item is 18A Agreement for the Purchase, Sale and Exchange of Lands Between the City of Cheyenne and Sun Valley Estates LLC for the exchange of real property, 15,365 square feet from the city to Sun Valley Estates LLC and 15,366 square feet from Sun Valley Estates LLC to the city, both having an appraised value of $100,000 and generally located south of Raleigh Drive.
We had a public hearing on this earlier today and this is that we're going to do a little switcheroo of some property between us and, and a private entity is to allow for access for the greenway. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none. Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave? Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The land exchange is approved.
Next item is 22A, sorry, 22B. Appointment of Brian Casey to the International Fire Code Board of Appeals.
That was a lot of consent agenda we had to go through there. Had to find it. All right. Look forward to a motion for Mr. Casey.
I'd so move.
A motion by Dr. Aldridge, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Mr. Casey's appointment is approved.
Number C, Reappointment of Brandon Van Tassel to the International Fire Code Board of Appeals.
I'd so move.
My Dr. Aldridge is seconded by Mr. Johnson. I should have said last time, but the mayor really doesn't get to vote on their own appointments. So I will not be voting on the last one or this one. All those in favor of Mr. Van Tassel, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed? Mr. Van Tassel's reappointment is approved.
Voucher report.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience or the governing body would like to speak about the vouchers? Hearing none. Next item.
Revenue report.
Anybody in the audience or on the governing body want to speak to the revenue report? All right, hearing none. Next item.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held May 8th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting for a restaurant liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Stella Paler LLC, doing business as Lusteria Mondello, 1507 Stillwater Avenue, Suite D, Cheyenne, Wyoming, other business.
All right. At this time, we're open for other businesses. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the governing body under other business? All right, hearing none. How about from the governing body? Anybody under other business? Mr. Johnson?
There are two things happening this weekend on Saturday. The Habitat for Humanity is doing their jump into Jules fundraiser. I believe that starts around 9:00 AM. And then also, there's an event for a tree planting under Rooted in Cheyenne. I believe it's in the Holiday Park area. So you can go to rootedincheyenne.com and then make sure you fill out their application so that you can get listed as one of their volunteers.
Anyone else? Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to give a brief note that I believe City Forestry will be coordinating an Arbor Day celebration this Friday at 1:00 PM at Holiday Park. And last year, the event was held at Romero Park and it was, it was fantastic. Lots of kids from elementary schools that got to learn about trees and how to plant trees. And it was, it was a fun event. So looking forward to that event again this year.
Mr. White, you're right. Mr. Ellison and his team did a great job. Activities and things for the kids, education. It was a blast. Looking forward to it again. Anybody else? All right, hearing nothing else on the agenda. We are adjourned.